Tion Brooks. Tion Brooks. Eric Brusadis.
Here.
Tom Burrows.
Here.
Iris Cabrera. The Capone Negro. Frank Carbone. Steven Tesler.
Here.
Michael Churicella.
Here.
Teresa Censiata. Giovanni Damato.
Here.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibonowski. T. Willis Elkins. Julia Amanda Foster. Julia, I see you. No audio. Chairperson Fuller.
Here.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Horowitz.
Here.
Sonia Iglesia.
Here.
Moisha Endig. Bosina Kaminsky.
Here.
Ryan Coonan. Yoel Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebovitz. Yoel Lo. Trina Makiva.
Here.
Sante Micali.
Here.
Toby Moskovitz. Martin Needelman. Rabbi Niederman. Karen Yezz. Mary O'Domroch. Janice Peterson. Dana Rackland. Bella Sable. Isaac Sulfer. Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Here.
Tommy Torres. William Vega. William Vega. Maria Vieira. Stephen Weidberg.
Here.
Simon Weiser.
Bogdan Bachorovski in. Hello, good evening.
Lisa Bromanti here.
Nineteen members answering the call, including...
Iris Cabrera is here, Jerry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Joel Gross here.
Iris Cabrera is nineteen. Who was that? Who else was that? Joel Gross?
Yes, Bogdan.
I have you, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
And Bogdan is here.
I have you, Bogdan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-one members answered the call.
Thank you, Jerry. First item on the agenda is 103 Lee Avenue. 103 Lee Avenue. Is there anyone here to present on that item?
Hi, Richard Lobell. Sheldon Lobell here. Present.
Okay.
Good evening.
I'll need to share my screen.
Mark Spitzer here, sorry.
Hi. So can you have Faye Ann Baton? Can you authorize her to share her screen, please?
I'm sorry, who was calling and saying that? Which one? Which person said they want to do the screen?
Faye Ann Baton.
Faye Ann, okay.
Yep, thank you.
So, Faye Ann, post her screen. Good evening again, Richard Lobell. I'm joined by Faye Ann from my office. We're here to discuss the 103 Lee Avenue rezoning. With us tonight is Mark Spitzer, the applicant, as well as Kevin Williams from Equity Environmental. We're just going to run through the basics of the rezoning, understanding that the community board has a rather full agenda, and then we have other professionals here who are able to answer any questions. Okay, thank you. So this is the 103 Lee Avenue rezoning. There's a rendering of, an illustrative rendering on the screen right now. Next slide. What this rezoning seeks to do is, is two rezoning items. The first would be to seek a rezoning, to rezone this lot and parts of other lots, from existing R6 and R6C13 zoning districts to an R7XC24 zoning district. The second would be, as with all such rezonings, that the application would ask for a zoning text amendment to map mandatory inclusionary housing, so that 25% to 30% of the residential square footage would be required to be inclusionary housing. And what this would do would be to facilitate the development, which appears before you. Statistics appear before you on the screen. This is a proposed 52,000 square foot, eight-story mixed-use commercial and residential building, with roughly 52 dwelling units, of which 16 would be affordable pursuant to option two. Eleven spaces would be required by zoning at the site, but 15 spaces are provided. Next slide. So these are the statistics behind the rezoning. This is an eight-story-plus seller-proposed building. The floor area of the building would be 52,000 square feet, of which roughly 45,000 would be residential, and 7,700 would be ground floor commercial. The total height of the building would be roughly 84 feet. There would be setbacks at the eighth floor. As we discussed, there would be 15 parking spaces, 52 dwelling units, and then affordability at either 13 under option one or 16 under option two. Next slide. So this is the zoning map. As you can see, it's very crowded and small. And you can see that there are several prevalent zoning districts in the area of the property. This is primarily in the midst of rather large area of R6, which is what the property is currently zoned. An R6 district would allow for anywhere of up to 3 FAR or greater, depending on the uses in the building, all the way to a 4.8 for community facility uses. You can go to the next slide, Faye Ann. So in the circled area, you see that we are an R6. As such, you can already do a community facility building here of close to a 5 FAR, 4.85. This would seek through the R7X at 5.95 FAR for this building. And you can see that the rezoning would span these two blocks, which includes primarily our lot on our block, and then would also be extended across Lee Avenue to cover additional lots across that street. So you can see the, in order to have the context for the rezoning, these additional lots would be added. Next slide. So the next slide is the land use map, which really kind of more closely and better illustrates why this rezoning has merit. You can see that Lee Avenue here is a commercial thoroughfare. So one important part of the rezoning is this actually corrects an error on the zoning map and puts a commercial overlay over the property. Right now, if you look at Lee Avenue and north of this area, there are roughly nine blocks here, all of which contain commercial overlays, except for this lot. So while there is an as-of-right option for this property, and indeed, anyone passing by the property can see that there's already a building which has, had begun at the site, you don't have the opportunity to put commercial use on the ground floor, which, you know, makes it of limited benefit as far as allowing for some local use on Lee Avenue, some local retail uses. So here, this would be 7,700 square feet of corner property that would be available for local retail uses. And having spoken to the community board before about retail diversity, you know, we'd like to allow for more of a live and thoroughfare here for a streetscape, which permits these uses. And you can see in the pictures, some of the commercial uses. Importantly, here also, the building faces the BQE. You can go back to the area map for a moment, two slides back. And so when we look at rezonings and we look at additional bulk, the additional bulk here is really merited. I mean, with the existing R6, which is what the property is, you have a non-contextual district, which would allow you to go, pending on your FAR, to tall buildings. The R7X here would result in an eight-story building, which is contextual with the surrounding six- and seven-story buildings in the area. And importantly, the BQE here acts as kind of this extra wide expanse in front of the building. And so really kind of would allow for, you know, this marginal increase in the height, and to importantly allow for a building which is going to not just create residential units, but also importantly create affordable units, half of which would receive a designation for residents of Community District One. Next slide. So if you want to page through some of the pictures, Faye Ann, I know we showed the context of the surrounding area. There's the corner property, which is our property, and then we come to the zoning change map. Again, you can see the R7X where it would appear on the map. It kind of skirts not only our block and lot, but also these properties to the west of Lee Avenue. It's seen primarily to be a productive use of those properties, given the fact that the existing R6 did not really result in any development here. This would allow for a contextual development, again, along the BQE, which really kind of merits additional density for these lots. Next slide. So the following slides show some proposed renderings for the building. There would be glazing on the ground floor, as is something that has been requested by city planning. You can see some of the balconies have been added. What Mark tried to do here was design a building which would be conducive to the community. It has layouts and unit counts which are, you know, respectful of families and such. There are no studios in the building. We can go over unit counts in a little while. I believe the project architect is also on the phone in case we have any architectural questions. So here's just a site plan showing the layout of the proposed building. And then there is a section of the building demonstrating the parking underneath, as well as the ground floor commercial use, like I said, 7,700 square feet, and 45,000 square feet, plus or minus of residential bulk. We additionally include on the following pages the parking layout. So like I said, 16 spaces in the cellar, as well as the ground floor commercial layout on the next page, and then residential layouts on the second floor, again, showing ones and twos, and then all the way up through the eighth floor, which I think includes, on the illustrated plans, a three-family unit. Next slide. And there's just a roof plan with the open space. So here's an elevation of the building, which demonstrates their rear yard provided above the second story. And then there are some illustrative pictures and renderings showing what the building would look like. Obviously, the area is dominated by the BQE before the building. This allows for productive use of this property. And again, importantly, the additional three stories above the existing structure would allow for not merely market rate residential units, but would also allow for affordability. So you can see here, this is a mix of the dwelling units. Again, no studios, and a majority of the units in the form of two and three bedrooms. So you have about 31 two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom unit for 52 total units. I think we also included some information about affordability. Of course, you know, importantly, once the building is a mandatory inclusionary housing building, then the 25% to 30% of all the units in the building become affordable. So that's not the case in the existing R6, where you would have a, you know, you could build a non-contextual building with no affordability. Here, what you have is required affordability. So despite the fact that this only results in an additional, maybe 30 feet of height, three stories, you end up with 16 additional units within the building being affordable. So, you know, it's a nice mix, particularly in light of the fact that the bedroom counts for the affordable units mirror the bedroom counts for the market rate units. So as is the case with affordable housing buildings and inclusionary housing buildings, you can't merely have the inclusionary units as small units. They need to reflect the unit breakdown of the building generally. So depending on the option here, you either have seven one-bedroom and six two-bedroom units, or you have eight one and eight two-bedroom units, which are considered to be relatively generous unit sizes. And, you know, we're happy to be able to bring that to this particular block and lot. With that, Faye Ann, I think that next page may just be the illustrative rendering. So with that, that's the prior proposal. I know we're just at the beginning of our process with the community board, but to the extent that there's any questions prior to our entry into our land use hearings, we're happy to answer those right now.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I don't see any hands up. Are there any questions?
Yes, I can't find the hand again.
Who's that?
Jan.
Okay, Jan.
If there are a lot of families in that area that have 10 and 12 children, how do they fit in two and three-bedroom units?
Yeah, Jan, so, so it's a good question.
I may have missed that. You may have said it, and I wasn't on.
No, the, it's a good question. I mean, the, you know, there's always a kind of a push and pull as far as unit sizes. The last rezoning that we brought before the community board actually had, I think, 13 studio apartments in it, and had a larger number of three-bedrooms. So I think this unit mix with a kind of a leaning towards two bedrooms, having roughly, you know, over 60% of the units as two bedrooms and a three-bedroom, kind of allows for, on average, greater than you're going to get. I understand that there are many larger families, which, you know, are going to, would probably require five or six bedrooms. But, you know, here, given the development plan, the fact that this is only about an 8,900 square foot lot, we're somewhat limited in how wide we can go on the units. So this would seem to be like the most feasible layout.
Are there any other questions? Are there any more flashes?
Yes, Madam Chair, Steve Chesler.
Yes, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I had a similar kind of sentiment that Jan had. Even just, say, a couple with two children and the children start to grow up, how would you deal with, you know, a two-bedroom? You really, you know, just so, I wonder why aren't there more, you know, three bedrooms?
You know, maybe... Thank you, Steve. And, you know, our total units here are 52. But what I can do with Mark is, and again, these are illustrative plans, but I can talk to Mark and see whether or not there's any flexibility on the upper floors to see whether or not we can get some, at least, you know, a handful of additional bedrooms in. So yeah, no, it's a great point, and I know we always try to err on the side of larger families and larger bedroom mixes, so it's something we'd be happy to look at.
Simon Weiser. Simon. Simon, are you there? I see your hand up. Does anybody else have a question?
You hear me?
I hear you now.
Simon, you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, so my question is, a few, couple of questions. First of all, I'd like to know about the parking. How many parking are they going to be doing in the building?
Right, so thank you, Simon. So the parking that would be required pursuant to zoning is 11, but we're able to provide an additional 50% more, so we've got 16 spaces underneath.
So for 52 apartments, 16, is that, that's according to code?
That's, yeah, it's actually greater than 50% above code. So code would only require 11.
Why is that?
It's, there's two reasons. So they look at the bedroom mix, and they also look at the, whether or not you're in the transit zone. So this property would be considered to be in the transit zone, and there's a, so it's just, you know, the straight zoning requirement would be 11. But, you know, understanding that we're trying to, it's a push and pull. We have 8,900 square foot layouts, and we try to get as many parking spaces as possible. So the site here would allow for 16.
Also, as this property is in the vicinity of local organizations that handle with low-income housing, I'd like to know to which organization did you reach out to get the input on this project? Because as you understand, this is a new phenomenon. You're coming into a street, an avenue, that most of the buildings are four floors high, and you're going way out of cantons of the whole area. So to which agency have you reached out? And also another question, I would just always like to, the sentiment that Jan brought up before, also about the bedroom sizes. You only have one three-bedroom apartment in the building. And if it reflects on the local community, the dyed-up community, it's, it's very mine, only one three-bedroom apartment.
Right, so, so thank you for your question, Simon. So first of all, we've been in touch with, with a number of affordable housing agents who were approved by HPD. And, I mean, the one thing I'd say is, first of all, when you take a look at the land use map, and you can take a look at some of the photos of the area, there's, there's some buildings around in the immediate vicinity that are tall, six-story, and probably exceed about 70 feet in height. You know, we've got six stories in the immediate vicinity, about a block away, there's a seven-story. So that, given that height, and especially given the expanse of the BQE here at over 150 feet, you know, really kind of merits an additional step up in density. It's like, it's nicer to get some of the units higher. The, with regards to the affordable housing agent, I know that the applicant has talked to, to, I think it's Metropolitan Realty, which is one of the, you know, one of the affordable housing agents that is, you know, that's on HPD's approval list. And so, you know, they, they would have to be, if they, if the, if the rezoning was approved, they would be an administering agent, and then the affordable units would be under their care. They would conduct a lottery. There'd be a 50% preference for community board one members, and, you know, the owner would not, the owner would not have the opportunity to rent those, those properties directly. Those would be directly through that agency.
Hi, thank you. This is David Niederman. Can I, can I speak?
Were you finished, Simon?
Yeah, no, I, I would like to, it's okay, the rabbi, give it to the rabbi, just to, thank you.
Okay, Rabbi Niederman.
Madam Chair, and thank you, the board, for allowing me to, to talk about this application.
We can hardly hear you, Rabbi. We can hardly hear you.
You don't hear me?
We can hear you, but it's not that loud. It's not really, your volume needs to be up or something.
Give me one second, please.
We can, we can hear you.
Okay. You hear me better now?
Little bit. Go ahead.
Yes, give me a second because I lost my Zoom. Okay, I'm here. Okay, so first, to your response, to your response about that you have reached, not you, that the owner has reached out to, to the Metropolitan, whatever the name of that agent, that's an agent that does not represent the community and the organization that serve the community. That is, is an administrative agent approved, and he runs projects all over the city, all over the city. And please don't confuse that at all with speaking with the local community organizations that serves the people living in the community with housing. So that you should know, please, that this is unacceptable from our perspective to rely on the administrative agent to run and, and be the one to speak about the community needs. So it's puzzling to us. Everybody knows when somebody comes into a community, he speaks and seeks support of the local agencies, see local agencies serving that, that neighborhood, that community, that community board, and so on. So I want to talk about a few other questions, please. Is this, can you explain to me, is this, is this a rezoning for 103 Lee Avenue or for 100 Lee Avenue?
I'm going to show, actually, it's, there's roughly seven lots, including the proposal. Faye Ann, could you call up the, could you call up the map?
The map or what?
Yeah, she's just calling up the area map to just show the boundaries of the rezoning.
Yes, what I'm just saying is because, so in looking, looking a little bit more, yes, we see that you are talking about 100 Lee Avenue as well.
Correct, across the street, correct.
Across the street. That's part of your rezoning. I see the rezoning area, but the general area, but you're zeroing in on two parcels. One is 103 Lee Avenue, and the other one is 100 Lee Avenue. Is that correct?
Yes.
Has there, has there, have you submitted, has the applicant submitted information detailing anything about the 100th Lee Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah? They shared that with us.
Sure. So there's two things I'd note.
Let me just go on because I think you'll be able to answer me afterwards. I'll look at it, and let me say that very clearly. I see a very detailed explanations and so on and so forth about 103 Lee Avenue, and very little, little, some language was smuggled in, so to speak, in the first paragraph, talking about 100 Lee Avenue, not identifying by, by the, by the street, but block and lot. Very little, any, that's the only location that I've seen in any specificity at all on anything about it. And that is very troubling to us. When you present a picture which talks about 103 Lee Avenue, then in fact, you're talking about two projects, and that is 100 and 103. That's number one. I hope you can take notes what I'm asking, because I have a bunch of questions on that. The second thing is, can you please tell me how many units of housing you are planning to build in, in these projects?
Sure. So with regards to the first question, 100 Lee Avenue is across the street from the property. It is a 8,200-square-foot corner lot. And so, so there's, currently approximately a one-story, 9,775-square-foot building on that site. And so as part of every rezoning, there's two things that happen. The first is that we include other parcels in the rezonings. Because you probably have heard of a spot zoning, where the city basically rezones a limited parcel just for the benefit of the developer. In these rezonings, as was the case with other rezonings we've been before the community board on in the last several months, city planning and the applicant work to include other properties that make zoning sense. So I actually, you know, Kevin Williams is on the phone. Kevin is the, the environmental consultant from Equity Environmental. And for purposes of the rezoning, we have to submit development information on not just our site, but on the likely development scenarios on all the sites included with the rezoning, which, as you're right, Rabbi, with us is primarily 103 Lee Avenue and 100 Lee Avenue. Kevin's already done all the analysis, the rent of residence, all that such with 100 Lee Avenue. It's included in the environmental assessment statement, but we're happy to add it. And also, I also understand that community boards have feelings about this. They sometimes say, we like other parcels included, we don't like other parcels included. I've had rezonings at city planning and the council that have been reduced from eight lots to the one that's owned by my applicant. So it's something which is, you know, it's something which comes up and is understandable. But we're happy to share, Kevin's happy to share, all the information we have on 100 Lee Avenue and what that development would look like as well. With regards to the second question, as proposed, there's 52 residential units. You know, the breakdown is as we shared, and of those 52 units, currently there'd be 36 units, which would be market rate, and 16 units which would be under affordability.
So, so what you're saying is that it's actually, there is information, or there is information, but somehow, I don't know why, the specificity of what's going to happen on the site was only presented on one.
Sure.
Nice explanation. So let me ask, nice explanation, but I think it behooves on somebody to be upfront and not only present one nice picture, an illustration of one, when at the same time, you're talking about almost a double amount of units that are going to be produced in the, in the second one. So that is very troubling to us. Clearly, you can supplement that, but let me ask you another question. When you say 100 Lee Avenue, at 100 Lee Avenue, have they articulated to you, to the, to the owner, that what they're going to do on that site? Am I, it is, yes, you are right. It is, it is that odd-shaped lot, remember that? And I'm just questioning if, if the owners, the owner of that lot, which is, I believe, if I'm correct, Mr. Goldstein, okay, did he, the owner had discussions with him, what it's going to look like? And was that presented, because it is presented in the EAS, sorry, it's presented in the, in the EAS. So can you tell me if something has been submitted, you know, if something has been submitted to city planning on that?
Kevin, can you tell us whether or not something's included in the materials which reflects the size of that building?
Yes, Rabbi. I, this is Kevin Williams, Managing Director of Planning at Equity Environmental. And, and your question is, of course, very incisive, and generally, just, just... Um, and, and generally, just, just to sort of provide some context to the discussion. So there, there are no plans or no known intent of that property owner by this applicant, uh, to develop that site. The rezoning is done as Richard indicated, um, to provide a contextual setting for an R7X. And it was determined, you know, while the project was being developed, that this would be an opportunity probably potentially to create a gateway, you know, to the neighborhood. But we analyze, just because of your concerns, a, a development of maximum, what's called a reasonable worst-case development scenario, which included that as what's called projected development site two. We look at both of the sites generically with absolute maximum height, axum, absolute maximum number of units, and determine whether or not that would result in an impact in some 22 impact category areas. In terms of projected development site two, and Rabbi, you can find this environmental assessment published online, uh, for the past 30 days, it's actually been available for public review for some time. My apologies if you were not provided that notice, but I'm happy to provide the board that EA. Uh, but in terms of our assumptions for that site, it's roughly the same square footage and would roughly result in the same size of building. So approximately, you know, I think we analyze in this case 44 units and we assume more commercial because it's more of an impact in terms to analyze. Um, we analyze a maximum height building, uh, and we analyzed the required affordable housing that would be into that. And we looked at a combined shadows, combined traffic, um, combined impact on schools, on open space, and all of these types of categories that are typically covered. And I'd be happily to discuss, you know, and, but basically the combined number of units that was analyzed under the rezoning was 96, given both sites.
So, uh, let me further ask a clarification of what you have said. Is, you, you said that the developer has no intention to develop 100 Lee Avenue?
We, we have no knowledge of, of that.
Please, please allow me to finish and then I would appreciate you will respond so that we understand each other and we don't bump into one another. Thank you very much. So when you say the developer, you're talking about the developer of 103 Lee Avenue. It is, is not intending to build on 100, is that correct?
I have no knowledge of that, no, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry, before you said, and so I'm just trying to understand. Before, in your statement, you said that you, that the developer has no intention to develop that site?
Rabbi, may, may, if I, if I may answer. Uh, so I'm just the environmental assessor. The private applicant is on 103 Lee. We have no knowledge and my, and during all the course of the two and a half to three years of this project, I have not engaged with, had discussions with, they're not a co-applicant of or related to the environmental assessment, uh, that I, and so I, I cannot answer that question of whether or not they're, they're aware of, they have plans for. But to date, this is a private application from a single applicant and that has been the case from day one on this project.
Let me ask you a question hypothetically, hypothetically. You have mentioned before that, uh, not you, but, um, but Mr. Lobell has mentioned that sometimes city planning asks, asks you to, to, maybe, um, I am saying something, I hope I, this is what I understood. Uh, your city planning does not want spot zoning, will ask you to enlarge the rezoning area and therefore when you do that, you have to give the, the worst case scenario, yes, on both sides. So, so let me ask you, do you know? And Richard, can you find out if there has been any discussions, uh, discussions between the two? And I'm asking, did 100 Lee, 100 Lee Avenue consented to the rezoning of that parcel?
Okay, so I can, so I can confirm that there's no connection to 100 Lee Avenue. He doesn't own it, he doesn't care whether it's developed. And importantly, when the applicant goes to city planning, we want them to include, really for the applicant's benefit, as few parcels as possible. Why is that? Because for every additional parcel, not only do the professionals, ourselves and importantly Kevin, have to do environmental and other analyses on those parcels, but we also pay application fees on the lot area, including the rezoning. So we basically, it just costs us money and it has no benefit to it. So at the end of the day, it's like, if, you know, the, the community board, it's understandable. If they say, we want this parcel, we don't want this parcel, we keep it in for purposes of our land use rationale. But I can 100% confirm that Mark does not get any benefit from including it in, in the proposal and that's basically it.
Okay, can I ask another question, please? How many stories is this going to be, this building?
How many stories?
I'm talking, how much, how, how many stories is this? Well, what, 103?
103 as proposed is eight stories.
Eight stories. The, in the environmental assessment statement, we are talking about 14 stories on both, on both, on both, uh, on both, uh, places.
Yeah, Rabbi, yeah, so you do have the environmental assessment and the reason why, and so let me just discuss the practical issues here. The, the floor area ratio that's allowed under an R6, R7X, um, is maxed out before you can get that high because of the small size of the site. The triangular site as well, it's across from the street, would max out the FAR almost at the same level. But what we analyze in, in a, for a worst-case scenario is, you know, the highly improbable, if financially unviable possibility that the building would max out the potential height allowed under the rezoning. But that's only possible when you have a much larger site and you're able to capture more of that floor area with, with rear yard setbacks and that sort of thing. So it's simply not possible to, or, or practical, let's say financially reasonable, to go higher than that on either one of these sites because of the small size of the site. Um, so, but we analyze for the purpose of shadows and bulk and neighborhood character, the maximum height allowed, um, even if it's impossible for a developer to build such a thing.
So, so, and you, and you, you, you did an environmental assessment and, uh, and Richard has been talking about, about, uh, a sec, a block away, a seven-story building, a six-story building, and, and you felt that even if both buildings go up to 14 stories, it's still in the character, character, context and character of the community, is that correct?
So your question about 14 stories, so I don't make that determination. Department of City Planning makes that determination, sir, and they're, yeah, so. Just a little bit of context, the adjacent building is approximately 70 feet tall, um, to the project site on 103 Lee. Um, and is roughly 10 feet shorter than what would be proposed by the applicant. But having said that, in terms of, as I said, it would be, it's actually, from a design perspective, simply impossible to build to the maximum height. In terms of the evaluation, the character and the neighborhood impact, primarily city planning looks at what are the impacts of those projects, um, particularly related to shadows, um, at, at those size. And what they look at in that context does, are there any sunlight sensitive resources that would be impacted by those, uh, potential, uh, shells of buildings? And, and, um, in terms of sensitive receptors, we're talking about stained glass windows, we're talking about community parks, we're talking about, um, neighborhood, um, farms that may be present and none of those were identified within range of the longest shadow as evaluated in the environmental assessment and as reviewed by Department of City Planning.
Uh, you, you did the assessment, can you tell us how many people will be added in, with the development of these projects? How many people will be added there?
Uh, Rabbi, combined on both sites, the potential, uh, so the average, uh, number of, uh, residents per unit um, in this CB is 2.48, uh, persons per unit, which by the way is one of the reasons why the units were sized as they were. Um, but then also counting that by the 96 residents, that's possible, given the FAR and the minimum, um, uh, then average of 850 square foot gross square feet per unit. Um, where, where, let's see, that would be, uh, about 250, slightly shallow of that, 237, thereabouts.
Of, of.
Rabbi, Rabbi, can you kindly wrap it up because this issue has to go to committee?
Okay, can I ask my, I have still a few questions which I'll follow up. Uh, can you talk to us, and did you talk to us, uh, about why you decide, well, I'm sure you did the market study, so did you see a deficit in small units? Or is there a deficit in large units? That's number one. And number two, and number two, what are the pricing of the units? And what is the layout of the units?
So I think we can, um, uh, Fan, do we have the layouts on the back of the plans? So, um, I think with regard, we just have the, yeah, we just, we, this is the layout information we have?
Are the sizes?
That is, it's not the layout of the actual u- per unit.
Yeah, so I think that, um, the reason is because when we give these plans to city planning and the community board, um, we're really getting rezoning to a, to a district. So we get an overall floor area and we get, you know, yards and height and such. We, we generally don't, we're not really tied to plans. When we go to the border standards and appeals, tied to specific floor layouts, but at, at city planning, you, you know, you get your zoning. So we're happy to provide, and I've spoken to Mark already about being able to give more individual layouts and in terms of building plans, we can do that prior to the time of the land use committee. Um, the pricing information, I know that we included the, regarding, um, regarding the mark, the affordable units. Um, and Mark, I know, uh, was there any discussion as far as the market rate was concerned? I know you've spoken to Metropolitan Realty as they had discussed, um, the market rate as well as the affordable units.
I'm sure that was submitted to the bank, with that finance financing was based on that.
Right, I think for our last conversation, I don't know if there's an issue with this audio, but, um, there, I think the one bedrooms were, the market rate was something like 17 to 1800. The two-bedroom, 25 to 2600, and there was only one three-bedroom available, but we.
One bedroom, one, one bedroom?
We can get you more information on the market rate as, you know, as, again, is an illustration of what's, of what's prevalent in the community.
What? Uh, 1800, $1800 per unit is in the community? You don't know the actual prices, but why don't you give it to us precise?
Sure, we, we can provide that information because Mark, again, is working with, with a, an agent that, that handles both affordable and market rates, so we're happy to provide that information.
I'm going to ask a, a final question. Please come up with a rationale why such corner buildings, which has so much traffic, okay? Why a community, what's the benefit of the community to bring in such expensive units into the community when the prices in, in, in that adjacent, uh, community is much lower? What benefits is the community going to have other than gentrification?
Of course. So thank you, Rabbi, for the question. So importantly, the, uh, the studio price, the prices of the units in this building are going to achieve 1,200 for one bedroom, 1,400 for two bedrooms, and 1,600 for three bedrooms on average for 25 to 30%, for actually for 30% of the units. So it's like, you know, those ranges from, and again, if, if, if a larger AMI was saw, the one bedrooms would be between 1,200 and 1,600, two bedrooms would be between 14 and 1,900, and three bedrooms would be 1,600 to 2,200. These prices are considered less, wait, I, I was just gonna finish. So these prices would be considered less, obviously, than market rate, given the fact that those, those are affordable units which would not otherwise be required if the rezoning was not provided. And also importantly, those are locked in for the lifetime of the building and those are, and half of those units go to community members pursuant to the preference. The other thing that's important, and again, obviously, you know, we're thankful for the opportunity to come in for rezoning, is that on an as-of-right basis, a lot of this size, you'd be able to get a roughly 43,000 square foot, uh, community facility building, which can include, for example, medical office or similar spaces. And so when Kevin looks at the density and looks at the usage of the property, he also looks at, at a no build, uh, a no, no action scenario, which looks at the worst case of what happens if we don't get the rezoning. And so the existing R6 is not, you know, it's not an R32, it's not an R4A, it's an R6. And the fact that you can get a building which is roughly, you know, 43,000 square feet, which would have an abundance of office space, when you compare that to the proposal, it actually is somewhat evens out and it creates a nice rationale for what's sought at the property.
There's a lot to talk, to talk on that. This is, I, I, my belief is that people saw this going up and, and learn about what's, uh, once this came up, there is.
Rabbi, I need you to wrap it up, you've been speaking for 20 minutes.
Okay, thank you. I rest.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Is there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lobell. Have a good holiday. Thank you for coming. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chair. You as well.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, uh, New York City Department of Sanitation.
Hello, I'm here. Um, would it be possible to get, uh, privileges to the chair of my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so in the meantime, hi everyone, my name's Richard Day. I work on the curbside composting, uh, program at the Department of Sanitation. Uh, I'm just gonna cover, oh great, I can show my screen now, just gonna walk through, um, program and also talk briefly about our upcoming leaf collection. Great. Okay. Um, so as you're all hopefully aware, curbside composting is back and, um, we want you to sign up now. Uh, we were able to partially restart service, um, back in October, uh, after a lengthy suspension due to COVID-related budget cuts. Um, so right now we're working to bring things back more efficiently, um, improve our understanding of who's actually participating in this program because it is voluntary, um, and improve our communications with folks, um, who are participating. Uh, when the program was suspended last year due to COVID, a lot of people didn't get the message because we had no way of contacting them. Um, so one thing that we're doing differently this year is that we are requiring all buildings to sign up for curbside composting service, uh, whether or not you had it previously. So if you're a single-family home, if you're a 200-unit apartment building, you need to sign up in the same spot. So NYC.gov/curbsidecomposting or by calling 311. Uh, the same 44 community districts that had service, uh, previously are eligible to get service again. So that's all of Manhattan, all the Bronx, large parts of Brooklyn and Queens, and then part of Staten Island. Um, those are represented by the orange areas on the map that you see. Uh, those yellow or beige areas, um, service isn't available right now, but we still want people to sign up uh, because that can help us direct where we're opening up, um, additional food scrap drop off sites um, and plan future expansions as well. Uh, so the takeaway here is, no matter where you live, sign up, it's gonna benefit you or your community in some way. Um, so, you know, I've mentioned signing up a few times, why do you actually need to sign up? Because we need to know you plan to participate. Um, so that's gonna allow us to ensure there's gonna be enough material set out for our trucks to pick up. Uh, one thing about this program previously was that it was, uh, on the more expensive side, uh, in terms of cost per tonnage collected. And so we're trying to do our best to avoid those sorts of issues by just making sure that we have those efficient routes, um, where there's enough material to bring that cost per ton down and make this program also make, uh, financial sense as much as, uh, environmental sense. So the more signups you're in your district, the quicker, uh, service is gonna start. Uh, you guys know that because you actually just started service, uh, this week. Um, yesterday was the first collection day in Brooklyn One, so that's great. I'll talk about that in a little bit, but we're gonna be conducting outreach to recruit buildings to sign up both in your district and other districts in those orange areas that you saw on that map. Because the end goal of this is we want everyone to be able to compost from their own home. So if you haven't already, how do you actually sign up? You go to NYC.gov/curbsidecomposting or call 311. And so starting October and, you know, as time goes on, we're gonna be adding service in community districts that have the most signups, right? So we can, where we can create those efficient routes. If your district hasn't gotten enough signups, again, not relevant to you guys, but if you've got friends in other areas of Brooklyn, if they don't have enough signups, they're gonna be placed on a waitlist while we try and build up the number of signups in that area to create, again, those efficient routes. Like I said before, we want everyone to be able to compost. So we're doing what we can to get them to sign up. We also encourage you to tell your neighbors and friends and other folks to sign up as well. I mentioned like a sufficient number and efficient route, but what does it actually mean? Is there like an actual like magic number associated with that? And unfortunately, the answer is no. The number of signups really does vary based by community district, based on housing density and geography. So each month, we look at the different numbers, you know, who's signing up and where and what sort of building and density, everything else. We're gonna use our routing technology, take all those factors into account and then determine where we can create those efficient routes. And that's where, that's where we will roll out to next, is essentially how this all works. Okay, just to give you some insight into that process. Again, you guys already have service because you had some pretty stellar numbers that you can maybe hopefully see on this graph that I pulled from our website. In terms of number of households in buildings that have signed up, you are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 out of the 44 community boards that have access to this. In terms of total signups, you're actually four. So you guys did great. You're behind some other Brooklyn districts in terms of number of signups. But that's still very, a very strong showing. So there's a lot of folks in your community board that do want to compost, and that's great. And that's why I'm really happy we were able to give you service starting this week. In case you don't know what composting is or why it's important, composting is essentially a food scrap recycling program. So we take your food scraps and we turn them into compost. So, which is a soil amendment, right? So that helps to beautify neighborhoods or grow healthy plants. And so food scraps, why, why you should actually compost is because food scraps, food cell paper and yard waste actually comprise a third of all the trash that New Yorkers throw out. And considering we throw out over 10,000 tons of material a day, that's a lot of stuff that's right now going to landfill that doesn't need to be. Alright, so according to our most recent waste characterization study back in 2017, 34% of all the material, you know, material that an average New York household throws out is actually compostable material. So again, a huge amount of material that can actually be diverted, but is currently being thrown out. But by composting your food scraps, you're actually helping to keep your neighborhood clean and healthy. So, you know, this program relies on our brown bins, which are these secure containers that actually latch shut if you've never seen them before. So even if they get like knocked over, nothing's gonna come out of them. So you're actually helping to reduce street litter, which is one great thing. Like I said, if it gets knocked over, nothing's gonna come out of it. If someone kicks it or some sort of animal smells something inside of your bin, they're not gonna be able to get to it. It's not gonna be all over your sidewalk as opposed to a black garbage bag, for instance. If you've got some food scraps in there and someone walks by and kicks it, that can tear it open. Or if there's a rodent or a cat or something, they can pretty easily get to the food waste in there and then you have waste all over your sidewalk. You're helping to avoid those situations thereby also reducing rodents and pest activity. So huge positives right there. You're also helping to make New York City more self-sufficient and resilient. So like I said, instead of us shipping or trucking or barging or, you know, putting stuff on rail out to the rest of the country and paying them to landfill this for us where it just sits and rots and produces methane, which is a harmful greenhouse gas, you're actually helping to reduce that. So we're keeping it here in the, in the area. We're creating compost out of that. And we're also creating clean energy out of that material as well. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Newtown Creek wastewater treatment plant. We can actually send some of our material there where it's fed into those big digester eggs and produces a biogas which we can use to power homes in the area. So, you know, you can either have your food scraps sit and rot and cost us money or they can go to these really productive, helpful uses, right? So I think the choice is pretty clear there. So if you haven't signed up already, that's why you should sign up. What actually goes in the brown bin? It's any food scraps, food cell paper, or leaf and yard waste. But what does that actually mean? That means fruits, veggies, processed foods, spoiled foods. Meat, bones, and dairy can also go into your brown bin. A lot of our food scrap drop off sites don't accept those materials because they operate on smaller scales that can't efficiently break down those materials. But we operate on such large scales, you know, industrial scale facilities we operate in that they can break down those materials, no problem. So while you might not be able to drop it off at your local, you know, green market, you can definitely put it into your brown bin and we'll compost it. Food cell paper means dirty paper napkins, dirty paper plates, coffee filters, tea bags, dirty pizza boxes are another one. If you have a pizza box with a whole bunch of junk on one side, but it's totally clean on the other, you can tear it right in half, put the dirty side, the food cell side inside your brown bin. You can put the clean side with your regular paper cardboard recycling, if you really want to impress us. Leaf and yard waste is pretty straightforward. If you've got a backyard or house plants or anything like that, you do some trimmings or something dies, you can put it into your brown bin, we'll collect it. There's no need to separate any of these materials. You don't need a bin for each, you know, different type of compostable material. They can all go into the same bin, they're all going to the same place, they're all gonna be the same thing, right? They're gonna get turned into compost or clean energy. Just to further provide some clarification, it is totally okay to put plastic bags inside of your brown bin. Maybe this is the verse you're hearing of it, but it's, so it's the case. A lot of our old outreach materials and even the bins themselves say that plastic bags are not okay. But all of our processing facilities actually have machinery that can separate out your food waste from those bags. So you don't have to worry about that contamination. If you live in an apartment building, you don't have to yell at someone for using a plastic bag. You don't have to go digging through your brown bin to pull those out. Totally okay to have plastic bags in your brown bin. They'll come out, I promise. Also, BPI-approved compostable items can go into your bin as well. So those are typically like, you know, cutlery or maybe some plates or cups, things like that. As long as it says BPI-certified, it can go into your brown bin. Things that are not okay, human and animal waste, so no feces or anything should go into your bin. A lot of people say, I've got corn-based cat litter, isn't that okay? No, sorry, we still don't want that. No hygienic products, no dirty diapers, no foam, no regular recycling should go into your brown bin either. Just stick with that food scraps, food cell paper, and leaf and yard waste, and you'll be fine. I referenced this a few times, but if you live in an apartment building, you can still sign up. We do need your building management approval. So what'll happen is if you're a tenant in a 100-unit building, you submit your application. We'll reach out to you and get that building management contact information from you. So building management includes property managers, managing agents, superintendents, building owners, board members even. So we'll need one of them to actually sign up the building and sign off on it. But we're willing to have that conversation for you if you're uncomfortable with it. We'll say, you know, there are some folks in your building who are interested in composting. Here's what it is, run through the whole spiel. And, you know, we'll try and get them to sign up that way. So if you're afraid to have those conversations, we're more than happy to. So again, no matter what your role in your building is, no matter what size your building is, please sign up. We'll deal with it. We'll, we'll tell you how to, how we'll move forward with this, okay? Nonprofits, agencies, institutions, community gardens are also eligible for curbside composting as well as long as they receive collection from the Department of Sanitation. That's all this slide is saying. So if you know anyone who has a community garden, tell them to sign up. And if they're not sure if they're eligible or not, still encourage them to sign up. Like I said, we will handle it on our end. We'll figure out, oh, this person actually, or this organization actually isn't, you know, able to sign up and we'll let you know, or they are able to sign up and we'll make sure you get bins. So sign up, sign up, sign up. So after you sign up, our customer service team is gonna keep you up to date on when service will begin in your district. So you'll get an email saying, great, you'll be starting service in December. Or sorry, you're gonna be, you know, you have to wait a little bit to get service. Again, your district does have service, so you should all be getting that email saying congratulations, unless we are missing some information or building management approval or something like that. Participants do have to use our brown bins, which we do provide free of charge. So if you've lost them or if they've been stolen or anything, we can provide you with new ones. If you request some and then your building needs more over time, we can provide those to you for free as well. And then just like your regular trash and recycling, we're gonna collect this material on a weekly basis. So collection is going to be once a week, just to be clear about that. Like I just said, when you sign up, we're gonna ask if you need a bin. If you do, we'll deliver it to you along with information for tenants in your building as well as building management, you know, building staff who are actually gonna be dealing with your waste. And we'll deliver it in that window between being notified of your start of service and your actual service start date. You should get your bins a little bit right to your building. Again, the neighborhood part of this slide, not really relevant to you, but maybe your building hasn't signed up yet. So before you do get curbside composting in your building, you can feel free to use what our food scrap drop off sites. So if you go to NYC.gov/dropfoodscraps, you'll see this map on the bottom. We've got over 200 food scrap drop off sites located throughout the city. Each of them has their own hours of operation and acceptable items. So please be sure to check the website before you go. So click on one of the green dots, see when it's open, see what they accept. And then bring your stuff there. Nothing's worse than showing up on a day that's closed or finding out that they don't actually accept what you're bringing them. So just check before you go. Takes a few seconds. Just a reminder about options for lining your bin. You can line your brown bin with a clear plastic liner like you would for regular metal glass, plastic, or paper recycling. You can also use a compostable liner if you prefer to do that, that's totally fine. Or you can use a paper liner if you'd like, so like a paper lawn and leaf bag or like a Trader Joe's bag or something like that. Those are all fine. You don't have to line your bin if you don't want to. It's just that those tend to help keep your bin a little bit cleaner, a little bit neater. You clean them out a little less frequently. And they can also help prevent material from sticking to the side or freezing to the side in the winter. So there's a lot of benefits to them. So I do highly suggest that you do line your bin, but you don't have to. Just one more reminder, because we've seen this sometimes, please set your brown bin out onto the curb. Some folks have the small kitchen containers that you see on the right. Those shouldn't go onto the sidewalk. We're not gonna collect those or, you know, they'll probably go missing or something like that. So just please place your entire brown bin out onto the curb, not the bag, not the container, kitchen container, but your brown bin out onto the curb. Collect that. And that's all I have to say about curbside composting. I'll be happy to answer questions about that in a second. But I'm just gonna talk about our fall leaf collection really briefly. So each year, the Department of Sanitation does a special fall leaf collection where we collect leaves from residents throughout the, throughout New York City. So we collect them on special designated days and we turn them into compost. So we ask that folks collect their leaves in paper lawn and leaf bags or unlined rigid, rigid containers. So, you know, just a regular trash bin, for instance, with no liner inside of it. It's no, not a clear plastic or not a black bag, nothing. So just set it out in those containers. Do that after 4:00 PM this coming Saturday, December 18th. And we'll collect it the following day or that week, at least if there are, you know, any sort of service delays, you know, related to a storm or something like that. So also worth noting, leaves, grass, branches, anything else that's generated by hired professionals should not be set out for a collection on this leaf collection day. Landscapers should dispose of that separately. They know that. Hopefully they don't try and pawn their stuff off on you. Lastly, if you go to NYC.gov/leafcollection, we have a whole bunch of events on our websites where you can go get free paper lawn and leaf bags. I'm not sure if your board ordered any bags to distribute themselves. But if you check out those events, you'll be able to get free paper lawn and leaf bags. So you don't have to buy them, but you can still use them to set out your leaves. Okay, that's all I've got. So thanks for that. I'm not sure if you want to take questions now, but thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Looking for hands. Does anybody have any questions?
Matt, Chair, can you hear me? My hand function's not working. This is William Vega.
Okay, Vega.
Thank you so much. Hi, Richard. Thank you. Your wonderful presentation. And many of us are big fans for composting. In fact, I registered on August when you were allowed to. I still haven't gotten the email. But I just, as you were talking, I tried 311 three times. Twice I had no idea what compost was. Then I requested to talk to the supervisor. She understood, but she said they didn't know how to register anybody. So I think you had to have a conversation with the call center. I used to work for the city government, so I know we always had to have update conversations. But it was disturbing that three calls to the regular operator had no idea what compost program was. And then when I finally asked to talk to supervisor, sanitation supervisor, she had no idea how to register. So you need to have a serious talk with them. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for bringing that to my attention. That is very concerning. We have spoken with 311. They are, they should be aware of what composting is and how to sign their folks up. But it sounds like we need to have another conversation. So thanks for bringing that to my attention.
Thanks, Vega. Are there any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Day. Have a great holiday.
Thank you. Information in chat in case people want to follow up, but otherwise, take care.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening. Next item on the agenda is liquor license. Do anybody have any comments? Or do we have anybody who want to speak about liquor license?
We had one person who had signed up, but I don't see him on the call. His name is Alex Neuhausen.
Is Alex online? Alex?
He's the only one for the liquor licenses.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there any comments on the board on liquor license? Okay, that concludes our public session. We're going to our board meeting. Can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Can I have the roll call, please, Chair?
Gina Argento.
Here.
Bakarowski. Lisa Bomonte.
Here.
Gina Barrows. Tiam Brooks. Eric Brzadus.
Here.
Tom Burrows.
Here.
Iris Cabrera.
Here.
Phil Caponegro.
Frank Carbone.
Here.
Stephen Chesler.
Here.
Michael Churicella.
Here.
Teresa Cinciatto.
Here.
Giovanni D'Amato.
Here.
Aaron Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski. T. Willis Alkins. Julie Amanda Foster.
Yeah.
Chairperson Fuller.
Yeah.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Horowitz.
Here.
Sonya Iglesia.
Here.
Luisha Indig. Lozena Kaminsky.
Here.
Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz. Yo Low. Trina McKiva.
Here.
Santi Micali. Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Needleman.
Here.
Karen Nieves.
Here.
Mary O'Dommerk.
I'm here.
Dennis Peterson.
Here.
Dana Rackland.
Here.
Bella Sable. Isaac Soffer.
Here.
Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Here.
Tommy Torres.
Here.
William Vega.
Here.
Maria Vieda. Stephen Whiteberg. Simon Weiser.
Here.
29 members answering the call.
Thank you, Chair. Can I have an approval of the agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Teague, I move.
I second. Vega seconds.
Who made the mo, who made the motion?
Teague.
Who?
Del Teague.
Oh, Del. Del and Vega, all in favor?
Aye.
Objection.
Aye.
Aye.
Objection. Abstentions? Motion carried. Now, okay, approval of the minutes? I have a motion, please. I make a call to approve the minutes. Julia Foster, who second?
Vega seconds.
Vega. Julian Vega.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 A guest? Abstentions? Motion carried. Can I have the speakers for the public session, please?
Maureen Bowler? Maureen?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, terrific. I won't take a lot of time.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. My primary reason for contacting you is that I am going to gently suggest that all of you on the board go back and listen and watch one of the committee meetings or this committee meeting that you're on. There. I think that there is a desire on the part of many of you.
Hey, hey, you're saying we're meeting management?
I'm sorry. See, that's, that's what I'm talking about. Could everyone turn off their mic, please?
Anyone that's not speaking, please turn off your mic.
Iris, I think you have your mic on.
You're gonna lose your two minutes.
I, I know, I can't talk over, I don't want to talk over people. So if you would go back and watch the, the actual board meetings, and I think you'll see easily what I'm concerned with. It's very simple to remember that you are on a video that can be seen over and over again. And a lot of you will have your cameras on and what we see is your forehead. If you're going to have your camera on, we need to see your face. If you're not going to have your camera on, that's fine. Don't have your camera on when you're looking at your phone, because it looks like you're not paying any attention and you're not interested. These are all kind of basic things. The gentleman who takes the, the roll call is someone who I think could be a very good manager to see to it that people are on time, people, they're, either they have their mic on or they have their mic off, whatever needs to happen. And then the very last thing is that at the last community board meeting that we were at, there was someone who was speaking, who was representing the New York Ferry people. And because of time, Madam Chair told him, you have one minute. Sorry for that, but we're running out of time. And when the one minute came, she said, please finish. And he said, I'm going to take the time that I need to take. Now, every single one of you at that point should have turned your mic on and told him to settle down. Because it was a very disrespectful thing to him, for him to have said to Madam Chair. And if he has such disdain for her, then she, he certainly has the same attitude towards the rest of you. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for those very important points. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Jocelyn?
Jocelyn Ramneren.
Jocelyn Ramneren?
Yeah, that, that's me.
You can speak.
Okay, hello, good evening, Brooklyn Community Board Number One. My name is Jocelyn Ramneren. I'm a constituent of New York City. I'm here on the behalf of all residents in New York City to advocate for Bill INT 1660 2019. Bill INT 1660 2019 is referred to as the Good Food Purchasing Program. The Good Food Purchasing Program has five value categories that are local economies, value workforce, nutrition, environmental sustainability, and animal welfare. The Good Food Purchasing Program sets standards and goals for the city procurement of procure food. This bill requires five-year assessment of each agency's progress. The local economy supports robust region economies by sourcing from locally owned small and mid-sized agricultural and food processing operations. The value workforce category provides safe and healthy working conditions and fair compensation for all food chain workers and producers from production to consumption. The environmental sustainability category supports a healthy environment by reducing or eliminating synthetic pesticides or fertilizers. It concerns soil, water, and protection of wildlife and reduces the elimination of synthetic pesticides and greenhouse gas emissions. The nutrition category offers vegetables, fruits, and whole grains, reduction of salt and sugar contents, saturated fats, and reduction of meat and elimination of artificial flavors. And the animal welfare category provides healthy and humane care for farm animals. Over 1 million New York City residents face food insecurity. Their health and safety violations, low pay, lack of benefits, discrimination, lack of training and career advancement opportunities among food workers in the food industry. The use of antibiotics can cause health complications for consumers, which leads to high levels of antibiotic resistance. Our food system contains racial and gender-based barriers for New Yorkers to access food through a food purchasing program. Their high rates of-
Can you please summarize? Your time is up.
Okay, I'm, I'm about to finish. Their higher rates of food, higher rates of obesity in New York City. Animals that are used for meat processing are produced by humans in an inhumane way by gestation, raising animal cages, and better, and environmental hazards that, that lead to the development of a good food purchasing system. Bill INT has been laid over in the General Welfare Committee since September 18, 2019. Would all elected members continue to keep this bill on the floor?
Please summarize.
I want to thank everyone here for your time and patience for advocating for Bill INT 1660 2019. Thank you. Are there any questions? Am I allowed to ask questions?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Is no one else on the call, Madam Chair? None of the other speakers on call? No. Okay, thank you. We have Parks. Does anybody want to speak? Mary's report as written.
There is a Parks Committee meeting tomorrow.
That's not, that's not for Mary, that's not Mary, Mary's, you're talking about Mary's. Talking about Mary's report. Okay. Thank you. Committee reports, SLA.
Good evening, everybody. There is a written report again like last month. And we tried to catch up on the ones we couldn't reach because our meetings are now ending at nine. So we did a number of items that were from the September 14th public hearing, a number of items that were from the October 12th public hearing, and then ones that were announced at the November 9th public hearing. We managed to get through quite a few. There's like 22 recommendations of approvals. There were nine recommendations of denials. There were a couple postponed, there's maybe five or six postponements. And then we didn't reach six items this time that'll be postponed because of time, they'll be on the next time. And then we keep getting these requests to approve the extension of property onto municipal property. And we're not taking a position on that because we used to review sidewalk cafes and find, follow certain rules about sidewalk cafes. This is basically just DOT saying, you know, put your stuff in the street and then go to the community board. So we're not taking a position on that. But I would, if somebody would make a motion to accept the report as written.
I'm opposed to Sonia.
I second that.
I second.
Bogdan and Sonia, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We need a roll call, Madam Chair. Voice vote is out of order.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
I had it myself. Hope all vote, please.
Roll call voters to accept the committee's report as written. Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows. Tion Brooks. Eric Brusadis.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro. Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Churicella.
Yes.
Teresa Cinciatto.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Who is that? Oh, Giovanni, yes. Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski. T. Willis Alkins. Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonya Iglesia. Moisha Indig. Bosina Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau. Marie, Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz. Yo Lo. Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Needleman.
Yes.
Karen Nieves. Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
I mean, yes.
Karen, Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Racklin.
Yes.
Bella Sable. Isaac Soffer.
Yes.
Rob Solano. Del Teague.
Yes.
Toby Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Here.
Maria, how do you vote, sir? Mr. Vega, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you. Maria Viera. Stephen Whiteberg. Stephen Whiteberg. I don't know what that is.
It's a yes.
Simon Weiser.
Hi Jerry, this is Gina Argento. I vote yes. Sorry, Mr. Quo.
Okay, 28 in the affirmative, including Ms. Argento. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next meeting is the 21st of the committee.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Environmental Protection, Steve Chesler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you allow, I have two, two items that we voted on. And I just, you know, summarize what they are and if it's okay to ask for a vote for both, for both items. The first item was related to a former manufactured gas site called, called the Equity, the former Equity Site at 222 Masbit Avenue at the corner of Vanderwut. And it's, you know, part of this large statewide program identifying former manufactured gas plant sites and remediating them. This site is currently a, there's currently a business there, welding business. And they determined there was a former holding tank that they proposed extracting coal tar, which is a byproduct of coil, of burning coal and oil for natural gas. Sort of like a, you know, a block viscous material, but it is a, you know, toxic compound. And so they're proposing extracting that from the former holding tank that's underground and then injecting a slurry to stabilize the rest of the contaminants in the soil surrounding the, where the former tank was. And they, you know, they're going to, basically the, the business will need to relocate during the, the process. That was in question during our meeting, but I since found out that that's what's going to happen. And trucks that do remove product will, you know, be hosed off on site. They have done some, you know, communication. National Grid is the responsible party who will manage and pay for the cleanup. And they sent notices to, you know, addresses in the neighborhood. And so I think, you know, our, our main concern is the communication aspect. I mean, as far as MGP cleanups, this is much smaller than, say, what was it, 50 Kent Avenue, which was much more significant in terms of the contamination. But still, this is a, you know, very, it's in close proximity to Cooper Park, Cooper Houses, and row houses and apartment buildings that are within half a mile of the site. So we have drafted comments that we want, and we're recommending the board approve to basically ask, you know, the DEC and National Grid to do much more extensive outreach. Like physically go to Cooper Houses and hand out physical notices. Work with Evergreen Exchange to, you know, to, for them to reach, you know, to disseminate information on their network. And that was essentially it. And then also just questioning, you know, they're, they're going to create these temporary fabric structures to, in ventilation apparatus to filter the air and clean the air. But if that fails, what is their remedy and backup for that? So that's, that's item one. And if anybody has questions about that, happy to field them. All right. And then the, the second item was, is related to the, you know, years back, there was a community monitoring committee called the Newtown Creek Monitoring Committee, AKA Nick Mick, which is formed to basically kind of be a watchdog for things related to the Newtown Creek Waste Water Treatment Plant, its operations and, you know, goings-ons in, in, you know, in the nearby, in near proximity to that. And apparently due to funding issues, the, the the committee is no, you know, no longer meeting again. And so we feel like, recently it was brought up that there's been asbestos removal going on there with non-union workers. And, you know, it's something I feel like if the community weighed in on that, and the committee felt, they felt that, that, you know, they could possibly influence that. And there are other things going on there as well, such as, you know, gas capture from the waste that the comp, the gentleman from sanitation spoke about today. And so we essentially want to write a letter to DEP urging them to restore the, this committee. And so if anybody has questions about that. And if not, then I would, I need a motion to essentially approve these recommendations for the comments on the manufactured gas cleanup site and for writing this letter to DEP to restore the, this Newtown Creek Monitoring Committee.
I'll make a motion, Trina.
Vega seconds.
Trina and Vega, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Someone will repeat the motion, please?
It's two parts. It's to submit comments to the Department of Environmental Conservation related to the Equity Former Manufactured Gas Plant Cleanup, you know, as, as attached to the report. And item two is to a letter requesting Department Environmental Protection restore the Newtown Creek Monitoring Committee.
Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows. Tion Brooks. Eric Brusadis.
Yes. Yes.
Tom Burrows. Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro. Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Steven Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiricella.
Yes.
Teresa Cinciano.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski. T. Willis Alkins. Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia. Moisha Indig. Ozana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz. Yolo. Trina McKiva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Niederman. Aaron Neves.
Yes.
Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Racklin.
Yes.
Bella Sable. Isaac Sofer. Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vietta. Stephen Weidberg.
Yes.
Simon Weiser.
Jerry, this is Tom. I disconnected. I vote yes.
Including Mr. Burrows, that's twenty-four votes. The motion fails. We do not have a quorum.
Okay. That concludes this meeting. We'll have to take up our, we have to conclude this meeting at our January meeting. Unless we have an elected officials that we can't vote on that, there's no other committee reports. So we don't have any other reports. So, uh, Steve, we have to vote on your, on your, uh, committee report at our next meeting. Is there an elected official here to sign up to speak? No elected officials signed up to speak?
Yeah. Unfortunately, there's a deadline with the, uh, the comments for the, uh, manufactured gas site.
How many people do we need to get a quorum?
We have thirty-four people in this meeting. Maybe someone is disconnecting or they couldn't say yes.
We need one.
We need one more person? Let's get that one more person.
Yes, I'm here.
Good.
Gina, Gina didn't, Gina, Gina didn't answer and she appeared to be in the meeting.
I was in the bathroom. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I'm here as well. Let me help, Jerry.
Okay, Gina Argento, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Rabbi Niederman?
Yes.
Okay. So that makes twenty-six. Motion carries. We can.
Yay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, Madam Chair, I just had, just a couple of things. Yeah, people want a copy of the DEC presentation on the Equity, uh, Manufactured Gas Plant. The board can write a link to that. And just a couple of, the, the New Heart, um, Superfund Site is, is alive again, so we're going to be watching that. And also the Meeker Avenue Plume. Um, there's a process where that is moving towards a, uh, federal Superfund Site designation. So we're watching that as well.
Congratulations.
If you want to send the website and information to the board, we'll send it out.
Okay.
And we will get the information out that you want.
Congratulate you and your committee.
Okay, um.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Ben Solitaire was seeking recognition for, uh, Councilman Levin's office.
Did he sign up to speak?
I don't know. He just texted me saying he was there to speak.
Uh, we sent, we sent a, a, an email to all our elected officials asking them to sign up. If they don't sign up, we don't know they want to speak. Is Ben on?
He's not here for Ben.
Is Ben on, Eric?
Uh, he's texting me that he's here. I, I can't see him in the, in the, in the meeting though. Maybe Marie or Jerry can find him.
Also, Eliana Cohen from Senator Kavanaugh's office wants to speak as well. She can't comment.
Well, you know, uh, these, uh, people that's from the elected offices, if they want to go through you guys to say they want to speak, then maybe they should tell us before two o'clock.
I'm here.
At the meeting that they want to speak.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ben.
I did, I did. I did.
Sign up.
I did. I, I replied to the email.
You revised what email?
The email asking if electeds want to speak.
You, you sent it in that you want to speak?
I did.
Okay, go ahead, Ben.
I appreciate that. Uh, uh, all I really, well, first of all, I do want to say, uh, as far as NICMIC is concerned, we very much support that letter, uh, even though they have been unfunded, we have been meeting. Uh, we meet, uh, we've, we've met several times in the last, uh, several months talking about situations at the, at the monitoring committee. We, I've been at the wastewater treatment plant. We do support, uh, DEP, uh, reinstating the committee as a funded entity. But, um, they are meeting, we are scheduling a meeting right now for, uh, for the, uh, in a, in a week or so. So they are still there, but we support fully the letter that Steve Chesler asked for.
Yeah, because I understand the community board is supposed to be part of that committee and.
Well, right now, I, I'll tell you, the members are, are Willis, Lisa, uh, Christine, Paul Pulo, uh, Paul, um, another Paul. There's, there's, there's about nine members. Natalie, uh, from Evergreen is on it. There are about eight or nine members that we, we, so Willis is on it. Uh, he's not here tonight, but he is on that committee. So, uh, if we haven't been reporting back properly, that's a, another question, but I, and I, we really do strongly believe that NICMIC is an important part of the community and should be continued. And we are talking about, we, the council member is going to write his own letter saying that that should happen.
That's strange because both Willis and Laura Hoffman were at our committee meeting who brought up that the, that committee needs to restore. They didn't mention nothing about meetings currently going on.
Oh, well, we do. I mean, I don't know. We're not funded. That's a big issue. Uh, but we do meet. So again, I fully support the, the letter. Other than that, I really just wanted to say, this is, uh, personally, this is my last uh, CB one meeting as, uh, representative of Councilmember Levin. Um, I, I may be back. I may not. I don't know what the future holds yet. If you've got a job, let me know. Email the end. But, uh, but, uh, uh, so we have spent, uh, five years. I've been coming to these meetings. We've done a lot together. Uh, you have a lot of really, really smart people, uh, who are committed to their community. And I just wanted to say, it's been a, um, a, a, a privilege to work with you all, uh, over the years. Um, and um, I hope to see you again. And regardless, uh, as, as I talked about with several of you recently, uh, I will stay involved in the community in one way or another. But, um, but yes, this, as, 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 I will never again say as a representative of Steve Levin, uh, I am here to, to speak. So thank you very much. Thank you for the work you guys all do. I've served on a community board. I know how hard it is. And, um, uh, I hope, I wish you all well and happy holidays.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, for all the work you've done. We really appreciate it.
And we wish you well.
I thank you very much, Rabbi.
We wish you have, we wish you well in all your endeavors.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Um, just in ways, uh, Councilman Levin is also wanting to.
Oh, he did. I didn't see, he, he said he would be here, so.
Councilman Levin, are you ready to speak?
I am. Hello. But, uh, it says attendee video is disabled in this meeting. I don't know if you can see me. If you can't see me, um, I just wanted.
You should be able to turn on your video.
It's not working.
I don't think I could.
Anyway, uh, I just wanted to thank everybody for, you know, wonderful twelve years, uh, representing part of Community Board One. Um, it's been a great honor for me to, um, you know, to work with you all here. And I consider everyone here friends. And I hope to extend those friendships to many years in the future. Uh, if you see me walking down the street, um, you know, please feel free to say hi. Um, I will direct you to Lincoln Wrestler, um, uh, for any questions. Just joking. Um, uh, no, I'm just joking. Um, uh, I'm, you know, I'm not going anywhere. I live in, in, on Green Street. Um, I'll be, uh, if you see me with my, my two kids, uh, please, please feel free to stop and say hello and um, yeah, it's just been, it's been wonderful. I don't have any, like, updates beyond, you know, we're, I'm dealing with River Ring and I'm dealing, you know, other legislation and stuff, but, um, um, I could tell you that my priority on River Ring right now is to get, um, you know, an extraordinary amount of senior housing, um, uh, added to the project, um, within the confines of Community Board One. So my goal is to have, um, right now, it's a, it's a mandatory inclusionary project, which is twenty-five percent affordable. My goal would be to have it no less than forty percent affordable uh, in terms of the number of units and that, that remaining fifteen percent be um, senior housing, uh, somewhere in Community Board One, um, which could be financed by the city um, with the property acquired by Two Trees and then donated to any of our fine not-for-profits or consortium of not-for-profits in the community that could, um, actually build the senior housing. Under the, the HPD SARAH program, which is the, that's the senior housing program under, under HPD. So that's, you know, that's, that's where my priority is because, um, we need senior housing in this community. So that, that's, just as a kind of ballpark, uh, my hope would be that that would be somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty additional units of, of senior housing.
Wow. Congratulations.
Well, I'm not there yet, but about thirty-six, uh, about thirty-six hours to go on that one.
Appreciate being informed.
Okay, we wish, I, I want to say we wish, I wish you well on behalf of the community. And I hope that you will still respond to our calls, even if it's after five.
Yep. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
For you, Rabbi, anything, yes, of course.
Thank you so much, Steve, for all the service that you. Thank you so much, Steve, for all the service, um, years that you spent working in the community. We really appreciate it. And I wish you and your family well, and I wish you the best in all your endeavors.
Thank you, Dialis. Thank you very much. It's been, it's been a great honor serving with you.
Thank you. Okay, did anybody else call up anybody and tell them they want to speak?
Just Eliana Cohen did from Kavanaugh's office.
Are they on? Are they on, Steve?
I see her in the, uh, kind of in lim, in the attendees limbo area.
In the future, can you guys tell these people that they have to sign up to speak? Because this is very, this is very time consuming.
We did sign up to speak. I signed up to speak. We always sign up. It's very difficult to, to navigate this platform because we can't message you directly. So it's very confusing. Um,
If it's confusing, if it's confusing, call the office and tell them you'd like to speak. Just for backup.
Okay. Well, we always do sign up every single, every single meeting. Um, but I just wanted to say hi. Um, we are working hard preparing for the upcoming legislative session. Um, we're hoping to have, um, some opportunities for folks to meet with the senator to voice some priorities for that soon. In terms of local things, one thing that was on our minds is, um, the Bedford Slip Plaza. Folks have been emailing us about that basically nonstop. Um, if we're, we're excited to talk about that with folks and, um, have been working on a letter. Um, if you have thoughts about that, definitely reach out. And, um, Steve, you know, the thing that you brought up, we're happy to be supportive of as well. But yeah, we're here. Um, always reach out via email and, um, I hope everyone has a great holiday. Thanks so much.
Thank you. You too. Okay. Did anybody else contact anybody else? You're in none? Okay, is there any new business? Any old business? I'd like to wish everybody a healthy, happy holiday and a prosperous, healthy new year. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Sonia.
Second, uh,
um, uh, Rabbi Niederman and Iris Cabrera. Thank you so much. Good night, everybody. Stay healthy, stay well, and we will see you next year.
Okay.
Bye. Happy holidays. Bye. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bye, Tish. Nice to see you there.
You guys.
Hi, Anthony.